May I, will please come to order this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. I will call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have one so you can follow along to see when your matter will be called. If you plan to address us tonight, we ask you to please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone and tell us who you are and where you live, if that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask you to speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. And from those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available both at Village Hall and on our website at wilmette.com. Also, our Village Board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet, so if you look up, you can actually see the cameras. The red dot indicates the active camera. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the Village Board, see the types of matters that come before us, the questions we ask, and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of Village Board and other local government meetings at wilmette.com. I'd like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmette who regularly tune into Channel 6 and follow the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on wilmette.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that interested parties and residents and others can review the very same materials that the Board members receive. This week's packet contained 289 pages. So we've had an opportunity to review all the information in the agenda packets, so if you plan to address us tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, most important things that you'd like us to focus on. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible. So, at this point, would you, as a courtesy to those around you, would you please take time to turn off your cell phones and other devices, which I'm doing right now as well? And while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. So, we have a quorum. Item 2 is the next item on the agenda, that's public comment. During public comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda. Members of the audience may address the Board on matters which are on tonight's agenda when that particular matter is called. So is there anybody who would like to be heard on a matter which is not on the agenda? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Blinsky and distinguished trustees. My name is Eric Potters, and I just wanted to inform you, I just came from the, I guess, planning a meeting, a study session for Winnetka. On August 25th, the number-one guy to his holiness, the Dalai Lama, will be coming to the Winnetka Community House on Lincoln Avenue, and I wanted to invite the mayor personally to come out, and he can bring a trustee, just one guest. There's going to be probably about 20 dignitaries there. There's going to be a private audience with him as well.
With the Dalai Lama?
With the number-one guy to the Dalai Lama.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, I'm from Morton Grove, and we had the Prime Minister of Tibet come through, and then we had the Speaker of the House, who ran against him, come through. He was now based in Walden, New York, and basically, Sakyat Rinpoche is taking residency in Walden, New York as well, and he'll be traveling to the Mayo Clinic for an MRI, and then be going to Madison, and then from Madison, he'll be coming here.
And what's the date again, sir?
I have flyers here to share with you.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then I've got my business card as well, with my personal email that I could share with your clerk, and, like I said, there'll be 200 tickets, so that'll probably sell out, but if you attend, you'll get a private audience with him and what have you.
Great, thank you very much.
So, I don't know where your clerk is.
Right there.
Perfect.
Say hi to Mayor D. Maria for me, would you?
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on a matter which is on the agenda? Welcome. Hello, nice to see you.
Nice to see you too. Thank you for having a public comment session. Some of you may recognize my name, I'm Shannon Zock. I think I've emailed all of you, so I apologize for my voice. I just returned home from vacation today, and we had a great time, as you can tell from my voice. What I am asking you to do this evening is to consider, for future meetings, as I understand that how, that's how this works, to consider revisiting the process of crossing guard selection. The area that I'm most concerned about is the area of Locust Road, right in, right in front of WJHS and the McLeian Center. There are a number of children that try, that cross there to go to Ramona Elementary School, including my children, and my daughter Alexandra, last year, in her fourth grade year, was nearly struck by a car because the traffic is rather severe at the hours that the Ramona students have to cross. I was asked to be patient last year when I brought, or, I guess, at the end of, not this most recent school year, but the prior school year, because these school times were changing, and that that was meant to alleviate this difficulty with having such congestion. However, it has only proven to increase the level of congestion at the time at which most of the elementary schoolers have to cross over Locust to head to Ramona Elementary. And I, and doing, so, I waited very patiently for a year, and unfortunately, didn't see any improvements, and in fact, only saw more distressing situations happen during that year. So this year, I went ahead to the Transportation Commission and proposed, like, would you please consider putting a crossing guard there? That didn't, I was also met with a please be patient in 2019. We do intend to do some construction on Locust Road, and we would appreciate your patience again to wait until that happens before we would even consider looking at putting a crossing guard there. To me, that just didn't sit right, as a mom of three girls and a very active participant within the school systems. Ramona Elementary School has more students than the other three elementary schools, yet it has 50% fewer guards, so it has two compared to four for each of the other schools. More students would cross there if there was a guard there, which would alleviate a lot of the congestion in front of Ramona Road, which I know gets brought forth at those same Transportation Commission meetings. Plus, it's just really good for kids to get out and ride their bikes before school. It's been shown in studies to stimulate brain activity and get them prepared to learn. So, I understand that there's a process in place to determine how crossing guards are selected, but I would ask, please, that you consider looking at that and making sure that it really is taking into account the current situation at Ramona and at, on Locust Road. So, I think that there are some more people, I was trying to keep my comments to this so that other people can share other comments about this particular crossing, so as not to repeat ourselves, so I know that there are some more people, if you don't mind them coming forward at this time, too. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Welcome, good to see you as well.
Hello, I'm Brittany Gerster, I live at 2911 Orchard Lane, and while my children have a pretty straight shot to Ramona, once they get to High Crest and the junior high, then they do have to start crossing Locust, which is very dangerous, and my oldest is a sixth grader, so she's had a few encounters having trouble crossing over Locust this year. I'm here to support the Ramona Needs Crossing Guards Action Committee as well, and I'm just going to talk on the point of, there is a crossing guard for summer enrichment, which is housed at Ramona this summer. If there's a need, only in the summer. I'm not understanding how it can be any less needed during the school year, when we do have such a large number of children in our school. So, you know, if you're employing someone for the summer, there is a need, and it's been identified as a dangerous crossing. It doesn't get any less dangerous when the schools are all in session. The timing really doesn't make that much of a difference, and everyone in this day and age is off in a hurry, trying to get to where they need to go in the morning. People are distracted, they're on their phones, and our children shouldn't be suffering or eventually, somebody's going to get injured. So, please consider our needs. Thanks.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Lauren Litchfield, I'm at 2340 Meadow Drive North, also with kids currently at Ramona. And in addition to the comments that have been made, I just wanted to talk a little bit about my frustration with the status quo. I, too, was at the Transportation Commission meeting and was shocked that when the data came through about the number of students using the crossings, that they were ready to just go ahead and reapprove that, when there's a crossing guard that only crosses eight children. There are seven on my street alone that would use the crossing. So, it was, it was shocking, and some of the Transportation Commission members were also shocked that they were getting ready to pass that through and say, yep, same thing, let's do it again next year, no problem, when clearly, there's a change. At one point, there may have been more children crossing there, and it wasn't appropriate place to have a crossing guard. Clearly, there are more children now that would use other crossing areas. I current, we were told that someone had reviewed that crossing and that, in fact, there weren't that many children there, when the truth is, I won't let my child go right now because it's so dangerous. It's a huge liability for the Village of Wilmette, it's a huge liability for all of us. No one wants to see a child get hurt, but I'm just frustrated that we are ready to just rubber stamp it and move on, when in fact, the numbers clearly showed there was a difference, and there is really maybe not a need somewhere else, and there is elsewhere. So, that's what I've got. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, good evening.
You may have to lean down into the microphone.
Yeah, I was going to say that, I don't think they make it tall enough.
Or just speak up, yeah. I don't have that problem, but you, sir, may.
Well, I grew up in the Netherlands, we were all pretty tall there, so. Anyways, my name is Bartine Baumann, I live at 2436 Cardinal Lane. I, too, wanted to talk about the crossing guard on Locust. I think we all recognize that, obviously, we need to have due to process and make sure that we're not, you know, putting, crossing guards in the wrong places, so we recognize the need for the process. But I think in the meantime, we have about a two-year delta between where we're fixing Locust and where we are doing a study for the impact that it could have on the children that are crossing there. And for that two-year period, we're, we're kind of keeping the status quo as it is, and that is, that is our concern, because that two-year period is a busy period with the construction, it's making it really hard for the, for the drivers to pay attention because they'll be distracted by everything that's going on. I know that there is measures that are in place to help that, but we don't think that's enough without, without a crossing guard there. So, we really would like for you to kind of take the leadership and say, okay, we know that there is a process, but in this two-year period, until everything is fixed on Locust, we need to have this, this temporary crossing guard in place, then we can do the study, and if the study then shows that everything is okay, and we don't need one, okay, that's it. But if the study then shows that we do need a crossing guard, then we all need to decide to do that as well. What I'm saying is, in the meantime, in those two years that we are fixing Locust, we should really have a crossing guard in place for our kids to cross safely over there. That was it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm requesting the crossing guard. My name's Tiffany Myers, I live at 2634 Laurel Lane. I have two boys, one going into fifth grade, one going into third grade. I told my younger son, excuse me, that I was coming here tonight to talk about the crossing guard, and he's like, why? Cars have only had to slam on their brakes twice to avoid hitting me. They were able to stop, it was okay. And I'm like, huh, huh, and so it was kind of shocking. I do let my kids walk, but it's, it's not very safe, it's like a Frogger. Any of you who have driven down Locust in the morning, all the cars are lined up for the drop-off at Wilmette Junior High, and the kids have to walk through the cars, kind of lean forward, be able to see if there's something coming the other two ways, and then run across. And it's puzzling, because all of the other schools have people out in front, including the high school, both at Nutria and at Loyola, but there's no one there to cross the children for what basically amounts to four schools at that street and that intersection. And as I understand it, it's $15,000 a year for a crossing guard, and would just love that you would consider revisiting this issue and making it a safe place to cross.
Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Maria Platt, and I live at 2801 Birchwood Avenue, which is right around the corner from all schools, it's a perfect place. And I'm usually drive, if I'm late, if my kids are late to Ramona, I drive down Ramona and then Wilmette Avenue, and then up on Locust, and, and picking them up from Ramona, too. So I'm always on Locust when there's a lot of cars there and when there's a lot of children, and I just want to reiterate what everyone else is saying, that, you know, I drive like two miles an hour because I see the kids trying to cross Locust around the cars, and I don't, you know, I want to make sure that I'm there to stop, because I've been there crossing, and somebody else will stop for me, and another car will go around them. And so, I just like to go on record saying that I, too, think that this, this should be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Sharon Gertz, I live at 2600 Green Leaf Avenue. I have two going to be third-grade girls, and I won't let them cross, because it is like playing Frogger, human Frogger. I've had trouble crossing there with them, I've had to grab them back from the cars turning into the junior high, they don't look, and then there's an additional lane of the cars going around, who don't see the children crossing, so we rarely get to walk to school. Crossing guards should be put there, just going on record. Thank you.
Thank you. One more? No? Okay. Mr. Frenzer, my understanding is actually that we're not waiting until the construction's done to relook at this, is that, can you give us an update on that?
Yes, I'm afraid the engineer and the Public Works Director isn't here tonight. My understanding from them is that the Transportation Commission's asked the staff to gather additional data in August, as school's back in session, and they're trying to schedule a meeting after the beginning of the school year. Under the Board's ordinance, the Transportation Commission can make the recommendation whenever it thinks it's appropriate pursuant to the guidelines the Board has approved to recommend additional or different allocations of crossing guards, and at such time, the staff will, when we, we can bring that back to the Village Board, and it's up to the Village Board. Obviously, the Village Board has to authorize the expenditure of public funds, but the Commission, I think, is going to look at that. They're also, are going to be examining the, during the construction phase, which is mentioned, still some significant period of time off, what safety processes are necessary then, and then post-construction, what's appropriate for the site as well. So, I don't know that it'll be two years, I don't know what the Transportation Commission will do in September, but my understanding from speaking to the engineer is that they're supposed to be gathering additional information as, once the fall session begins.
Right.
And discussing it again.
So we're still utilizing the process, but it's expedited, rather than some of the initial suggestions of waiting till Locust was reconstructed, they're going to try and gather data right at the beginning of the school year to do their work.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And I'll speak to the, I'll speak to the Director of Engineering and the Village Engineer tomorrow.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What role, if any, does it play that that crossing is not on the walking routes that are on the map used by the school district? And, yeah, could you help me understand that aspect?
I don't know that I'm the best qualified to speak to that, if I regrettably don't have the engineer here tonight. The policy document that has been approved for the Transportation Commission to use does look at, at many different factors, including traffic, the age of the students crossing, where the school crossing routes are, I'm not sure that that's dispositive one way or the other as to whether or not there should be a crossing guard there. There's many different variables identified in the policy that they're supposed to examine.
Well, I think it's not disqualified by virtue of not being on...
We, I don't think either of us are the safety, transportation safety experts that would answer that question. Does that make sense? I'm like, I'm not, I'm not the transportation safety expert that would answer that question, and I don't think you are either.
I would be.
Bridget would be.
Or Chief Murphy. Or Chief Murphy, but my understanding of it is that's one of the variables that they look at. I don't know that it's necessarily dispositive, where people go is also an important variable that they look at, too. Times and ages of students, and I don't think the policy, from my recollection of reading it most recently, identifies one factor as necessarily dispositive above all others.
Right.
If that's helpful, and if, if not, certainly, either Dan or Bridget can perhaps shed some more light on it.
Yeah, would you, would you ask, would you ask them to circulate a memo to the Board responding to Trustee Kersman's question?
Sure.
So we sort of have the, the experts' answer on it.
Will do.
Some context for my question is that there are unmet needs in the community, this is one. In looking at the map, it does not cover full extent of the village, and I know that parents in another neighborhood have expressed that they have been told that if the map doesn't show a route going that way, therefore, they shouldn't get a crossing guard. I want to, I just would like clarification on that. I think the upside to that crossing at Locust is that it, for all the reasons besides what parents have shared tonight, is it makes full use of the community playfields as a transportation route, rather than steering people towards the busy arteries of Wilmette Avenue and Lake Avenue. So, I think that would really be building upon one of our best assets for transporting kids to a number of schools, both public and private.
Thank you for sharing your opinion, Trustee Kersman. Okay, so we're done with item 2, we'll move on to item 3.
Let's see, I'm sorry, I don't want to be a noxious. What is that called? What would you want me to tell you? How to be a person? How to be a person?
Please come up to the podium and address us.
Hey, team, Alexandra Idenberg, I live at 504 Illinois Road. I have four kids, two of which will be starting at Ramona in the fall, and having kindergartners take this longer walk is obviously a concern, and I want them to be safe. I understand that, you know, from what you were just saying, that there is a process and it's getting expedited. Where, what are our next steps? This is something that's really critical to the safety of our children. I am paying a lot in property tax to make sure that my kids have access, this is an equity issue. I didn't know that when I moved to Wilmette, that because I lived on the west side, that my kids were going to be treated differently than the kids on the east side, and so I didn't, I didn't understand that part. And so, right now, kids on the east side are getting more crossing guards than kids on the west side, and this is a very critical juncture, and so I'm very excited that you guys just shared that this is going to be expedited, but when can we expect to have an update, and how do we get those updates?
Eighteen in September, I believe, is what Mr. Frenzer said.
They haven't set the exact date, but the, the next step, I would think, would be the participation in the Transportation Commission process.
And then you noted you were going to be talking to somebody specifically, is there a way for us to understand that conversation and how it panned out and what the answers were from that?
It's the Village Engineer. We asked, I asked the Village Engineer to share a memo with the Board on the policy issue, and the question that Trustee Kersman asked.
And will that come in the minutes and be deliverable that everyone in the community can see as well?
It certainly could be.
I can make it part of the next Board meeting's agenda materials, and then it would be a matter of public consumption. I, actually, I mean, what we're probably going to be doing is just reciting the, the standards that the Transportation Commission, there's a policy document, it's on our webpage, I think I've, in some of the many emails that we've sent, that's been identified as to where it is on, on the webpage, under Transportation Commission, and that, in fact, sets out all the standards. So really, what I'm going to be trying to get the staff to help answer, I think, for Trustee Kersman, is, is what does the policy say? And the narrow question, as I understood it, was, is school walking route, like, dispositive in the sense that if it's not on the route, then there's no consideration given, or, at least, that's more or less my understanding of it, or how...
Correct, that was the narrow, the narrow question. I, I also, I, having spent some time with it, I'm not clear on how that the policy, with those various factors, how that could be addressed if we were to see flaws in it. It is a policy document, but it, I wasn't clear whether that was ordinance or policy, or if that's one and the same. I have inquired on that, and Mike has tried to assist me with that, but, but there's some clarity lacking, and so I will be following up on that as well.
Well, I can, I guess I can respond to that directly. I mean, the Village Board passes the ordinances of the Village. The Village Board has an ordinance on the books that says the Transportation Commission is charged with designating the locations of the Village where it's necessary to place crossing guards, and those designations have to be pursuant to, in accordance with the guidelines adopted by the Village Board. So, the Village Board created the Transportation Commission, the Village Board gave them their direction, the Village Board is responsible for approving the policies that they use. If the Village Board feels that they're inadequate, need to be updated, changed, or whatever, the Village Board has complete authority to, to make those changes. Ultimately, the Transportation Commission also only makes recommendations, really, I mean, they designate where they should be, but it's up to the Village Board to decide, because the Village Board passes the budget, how many crossing guards we're going to fund. So, the, the simple answer to that is that the, the Village Board has, has all the authority to either maintain the existing policy, change it, maintain the existing practice, change it.
And you guys are also the ones that, and it's my understanding, this does cost $15,000 for this additional crossing guard, you guys are also the ones to authorize that financing and would provide the approval for that?
The Village Board approves it as part of their, their annual budget. We just build in the number of, the staff builds in the number of crossing guards that's authorized when they adopt the budget.
Okay, fantastic. I really appreciate you guys taking a look at this, it means a lot to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items beginning with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda, and tonight, that means starting on page 1 with item 3.1, all the items on page 2, and the first three items on page 3. Items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item's not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and will not be discussed. Two comments here before we proceed. One is, Trustee Kersman had an amendment to the minutes which have been distributed, so item 3.1 will include the amendment that Trustee Kersman proposed for the minutes. And then, item 3.2 has been withdrawn by the applicant for tonight, so I will remove that from the Consent Agenda, and we will vote to table that to the next Board meeting as requested. So, other than those two items, are there any other items that any member of the audience would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Okay, hearing none, are there any other items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Again, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda does, includes item 3.1 as amended, and item 3.2 has been removed.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye.
So the motion has been, a motion carries, Consent Agenda's been adopted. If you are here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it was just approved, and I'll clarify for people who are here tonight, again, all the items beginning with 3 have been approved, and that includes item 3.3 and item 3.4 on the Land Use Committee report, and also items 3.12 and 3.13 on the Judiciary Committee's report. So if you're here for one of those items, it's been approved, there'll be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda, so you are free to leave. Of course, more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Now, the people that just left, I didn't get a chance to tell them, but if you're leaving, be sure and stop by one of our restaurants before heading home, okay? It is early. Next item on the agenda is item 4, Report of Officers, so we'll start with our report from our Village Manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
Next report is from our Corporation Counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Item 5 is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner, and there's no report tonight. So we'll move on to the Standing Committee Reports. First up is Land Use with Trustee Pierce.
All items were handled on the Consent Agenda?
But we've got, so, should we, should we, should I ask?
No.
Trustee Pierce for a motion on item 3.2?
Yes.
Okay, so, Trustee Pierce, can I get a motion? Yeah. Can I get a motion to table item 3.2?
Okay.
To the July...
Twenty-fourth. Aside from item 3.2.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, that was a last-minute switch, you know? So, Trustee Pierce, can I have a motion to table item 3.2 until the July 24th board meeting?
I move that item 3.2 be tabled until the, which meeting?
July 24th.
July 24th.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Are there any opposed? All right. So motion carries, item 3.2 has been tabled until the next village board meeting. Now, Trustee Pierce, everything else has been covered.
Everything else was on consent agenda.
Okay. Trustee Sullivan, Finance Committee.
We have one item this evening. It's item 6.21, and it's a discussion presentation on the Wilmett Business Development Program.
So, Mr. Severson, are you going to make the presentation? Welcome. We don't get to see you as often at village board meetings as we do, Mr. Adler, so.
Yes. Again, I'm Lucas Severson, the Business Development Coordinator for the village. And this is really a presentation, and follow-up to a presentation I gave the Finance Committee a little earlier. So if you're on the Finance Committee, sorry, apologize. It's gonna be kind of the same. But just for the ease of the presentation, I'm gonna categorize our efforts into five different categories. Economic development being the first, that's really just attracting new businesses. Business retention, which is keeping the existing businesses we have. Business assistance, which is making it as easy as possible for businesses to operate in Wilmett. Regulatory improvements, which would be a lot of the things that come before the village board through the Land Use Committee, and, and marketing. For economic development, I think a lot of people commonly show, commonly associate this with calling businesses, getting businesses attracted to come to your community. That's certainly part of it, but it's really a lot, lot more than that. It's about building relationships with, with businesses. I might be contacted by a business or contact a business in a particular site that they're looking for, might not be available at this time. But in keeping that contact with them over, over months, years, hopefully, an opportunity does, does become available, and I can contact them and hopefully invite them to the community.
And your memo said that we keep, actually keep a database of the contacts that we get.
Yes.
So five years ago, who was it that called me about that corner? And now that it's open, you can actually go back and look and find what, who was it?
Yeah. It's actually a great, a great resource to have. So, yeah, every, every kind of conversation I have with a business, talk to them about kind of what they're, what they're looking for, where they want to be, the size of the space. And from that, I can get a, a better sense of maybe when certain opportunities become available, I know who to contact. Other things we do, in addition to talking to potential businesses, would be talking to our existing commercial property owners, developers, and that's really to try and attract development to the community. So if we know a particular property might become available in the next year or two, we'll work with that property owner as well as potential developers that we identify that might, might be suited well for that site. In addition to that, we also work with the, the broker community, so the commercial real estate brokerage community. And that's important because, especially a lot of the, I'll call it national or regional businesses, will tend to hire commercial brokers to find their spaces for them. And while we don't have a lot of national tenants, those national tenants that are seeking locations that want to be on the North Shore, it's important to have that relationship with those brokers. That way, Wilmett's the top of the list when, when they're looking for sites. Because we have so many independent businesses at Wilmett, it's also important to have information readily available to those businesses. So if they're looking on the North Shore or looking in the area, they say, hey, I want to, I want this type of space, that's available. It's actually available on the village's website at any time. So a lot of the calls actually I get are from people who went on the website, saw the listing, and are following up, asking me more questions about that particular property. And just, just sort of backtracking, talking about developers and, sorry, seeking out, talking to commercial property owners. By the, the Village Center Master Plan, identified several key redevelopment sites. And so those sites, in particular, we keep a close watch on so that, you know, keeping in contact with the property owners so that when something does become available, we can act on it quickly. Also talking about business retention, and this is arguably more important than business attraction, is really keeping the great businesses we, we have in the community. I feel that's, that's arguably more important. And the way we, we do that is building relationships with the business community. So I attend all the Chamber of Commerce board meetings and work directly with, with the Chamber of Commerce and the business community in, in general. So I tend to hear more about, maybe if a, a business might be, might be struggling, might need something that allows the village to be a little more proactive, and it may be helping provide assistance to that business. So hopefully, it doesn't close or, or move out of the community. In terms of, of business assistance, this is really, I would consider the, the most important part of my job on a day-to-day basis, is really just providing assistance to, to businesses. I'm really the single point of, of contact for most of the business community. So, you know, over, over the years, I think most people in the village have, have known if they get a, you know, the finance department might get a phone call from a business, they'll know to direct it directly to me. That way, I can work directly with that, with that business. And just really keeping, keeping in contact with, with the business community, business community. One of the things that, that we have in Wilmett are, like I said, a lot of independent businesses. And most of these businesses, this might be their, their first or second business that they're, that they're opening. So it's really important to have a resource at the village to sort of guide them through the approval process, get them connected to the community, to work with the Chamber of Commerce and other businesses to help support their, their growing business. Other things that we do as a village, a lot of this comes through the board, is regulatory improvements. So making it as easy as possible for businesses to, to do business, to operate, things we've done, make it easier to have outdoor seating, make it easier for restaurants to open. Those are all things that, that come through the village board or are made.
Liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses. There, there you go. And lastly, just marketing. Like I said earlier, the, the village works closely with, with the Chamber of Commerce. This is especially helpful on our marketing projects because we really work in tandem. So we're not doubling resources. We're really combining resources and having, you know, one message for the community. One of the things that we've been working on is a new campaign, which hopefully, we'll be able to announce in the upcoming weeks. No, no timetable set on, on that. And one of the great benefits that we've, we've had in working with the Chamber of Commerce on this joint marketing program is they've been able to contact residents who live in the community, who are marketing experts. We've really been able to get them to volunteer their time on this project. So we got some, some, you know, executive level at execs to, to help us with the project. So we're really excited about that.
Yeah. It's one of the great things about the town, that you've got so many people that are willing to volunteer their time, whether it's on a board or commission or, you know, on a, on a special project like this. So any questions for Mr. Severson? Obviously, the board members saw the, what, five or six-page memo that he put in the, that was in the agenda materials tonight.
I mean, as Mr. Severson said, this was a good discussion between himself, Mr. Brayman, and Ms. Malloy who brought this to us in the Finance Committee, is starting the discussion of what are we doing, knowing that some of the, we're losing carsons, and, you know, how do we continue to attract businesses here in, in the thriving environment, which we, we've done. And I think, you know, it's a good compliment to everybody, as we've talked about, but, you know, where do we go? So this was, I think, an initial discussion of some ideas of how do we continue this momentum?
But just, you know, a couple of clarifications on the memo. One of the, one of the comments in the memo around business attraction, business development was, you know, we haven't had to use financial incentives except for the hotel tax. But the hotel tax was not a tax on Wilmett residents. It was a new tax that the hotel developer was getting a piece of, but the village was also getting?
Right.
A piece of. So?
Right.
In some sense, that's not really a financial incentive in that we levied a tax that we then collect for ourselves and give some of it back to the developer. That's not the same as a TIF or?
Right.
Or, you know, contributing land or something like that.
Right.
So I wanted to point that out. And the other?
And that's capped at 10 years too, or 3.1 million.
Right. Well, until they come back to us and ask for, to start again. The other, the other thing, and it's highlighted in here, but I think it's really important, the fact that when a new business comes to, calls you and says, hey, we're looking at this site, our courtesy inspections are a, a big deal. Without them having a lease signed, we'll work with them to identify what has to be done to a site so there aren't surprises. So we don't have someone sign a lease and say, oh, I, I don't have the money to do all these improvements.
Right.
So you're back to square one with them. And I will say that over the past several years, as we've had new restaurants come to town, one of the things that a number of those restaurateurs have said to me personally, something along the lines of, look, I've operated in lots of different towns over my career, and I got to tell you, I've never had as good an experience with a local government as I did with Wilmett when I was getting my business open, which is obviously the kind of thing that the village president and the board members want to hear from, from businesses, that, that the staff is being supportive. And, and as, as we sort of joke, you know, other communities want you to come here so they can, you know, mess with you for six months while you try and get your business open, and that's not how we operate here in Wilmett, which is great. Trustee Dodd?
Actually, I have a few questions.
Yeah.
If that's okay. Okay. The first question was on the 611 Green Bay property.
Yes.
So can you tell us what the, how mu, how much of the space is rented and how much is vacant?
Of the, yeah. Of the residential component, I, I can't speak to that. For the commercial component, of the roughly 6,000 square feet, none of the space has been, has been rented yet.
And so have we had any discussions with the developer about the rental? Because part of that property was bringing people into the community. That property now has been up for a year, and so I just wonder, I, I think, you know, do we know and?
Our last discussion, we do. We, sorry.
And do we have any flexibility to kind of get to a point where we're going to ask them to start to lower the rents, to get the people to come in? And what's, do we have anything?
Till the last time we talked to them, they were pretty close to 60% leased, and that was probably about a month and a half ago.
Really? That's?
That's on the residential side. On the residential side.
That surprises me, because when I go down, when I look at that property, I'm just saying, like, at night, it's looks?
Right. It was, it was around the high 40s, 50% occupied, and around 60% leased, meaning lease signs, people moving.
Oh, I see. Got it, got it.
Um, you know, we, we sort of judge, you know, the success of that project on what that developer, if that developer would want to do it again in Wilmett, and we know they want to do it again, meaning they want to, they would love to find other property to build in Wilmett, which makes us feel good about at least where they believe they are in their rentals right now. As I think you may know, the rates that they're charging are fairly high, and to fill the building, I believe they have been making rent concessions and maybe a month free and doing other things to fill those units. So the per-square-foot rates you calculate when you look at the square footage and the amount it's costing isn't necessarily the rate in which somebody's paying, because they are doing, I've, I've seen it for one bedrooms. I know all the three bedrooms leased up really quickly. I think within 45 days to 60 days, they were leased up on the three bedrooms. Now, they don't have a, a lot of three bedrooms. So I, I would say they're looking at that themselves. I don't, at this point, think it's necessary for us to get involved to tell them what they need to do to fill the building. I think they're interested in doing that. And again, we've seen it, I, at least on the one bedrooms, because I signed up for the mailing list to file, file long, and I know they're giving a month free. And, you know, I, I think they're, you know, they're doing their best to, to get the building filled with, you know, keeping their, you know, their rent structure, you know, fairly, fairly, fair across the board.
Yeah, go ahead. The other question I had was on the marketing campaign, and I just wondered, so have there been any discussions about, as part of this new marketing campaign, to do something to help people understand places to park? Because I do think, I, I hear a lot about, sometimes people feel like it's difficult to find a place to park, and I think there are places people can park that they might not know about, like, on the weekends, they can park in this village hall after, you know, as an example. We park there a lot now because I know about it, and there's usually not very many people there. And then I just want, or, and in addition, if there's been any discussion around doing, like, a frequent buyer card? Or I guess I'm just looking for ways for us to encourage, to kind of build on the momentum where we're going to do this great marketing campaign, which is going to encourage shop local. And then what are other things we can do to, to, to reinforce that? And that's what I was thinking about. I don't know if we like the idea of a frequent buyer card, but?
It's been discussed.
Okay.
Yeah. It's definitely been discussed.
I just didn't see it in here, so. I apologize. I just didn't see it in here.
No, it wasn't in there, but it's, but the issue is who's going to be the bank? You know, the chamber, exactly. And that's, that's, therein lies the challenge, because they're not really staffed to administer a program like that. So then you'd have to outsource it, and that means you got to pay for it. So there's been, there has been discussions around it. I don't know what the latest discussion, Lucas, you may know if it's been talked about recently.
Yeah. I don't, it, it probably gets brought up, you know, every, every year or two about, and different, different vendor, different companies have different ways in which you can, you can have a frequent buyer program. I know we were in talks with Spring, I don't know if that's an app you're familiar with, but essentially, that's, that's sort of its own frequent buyer program, and they were at, at a time wanting to work with communities, but that never really panned out.
Some of the individual businesses use either Springer Belly. Nix uses Spring. We've had these discussions with the Chamber on and off for quite a number of years now. There were some attempts at it in the past, and I think what the Chambers leaned toward more fre, more recently is more holiday promotions or special promotions, try to just drive event-type foot traffic downtown, such as a, a business open house or wine walk.
Sip and shop.
Yes. The sip and shop type events, and they've been very supportive of the village. It wasn't meant to be, it, it was, obviously, it's public entertainment, but the, the concerts that we've started having?
Right.
Was to drive business to the restaurants on what's traditionally a slow night in the middle of the week. So they've, I, I think the, their pattern has been to move more toward event or special event-type things to generate interest and, and the experience.
Yeah.
The reason why I was, I mean, I, I think those are, I really, I think that's great. The reason why I was suggesting something like a frequent flyer, buyer card is just, in my discussions with many residents and businesses during this recent minimum wage discussion, you know, I had an opportunity to talk to lots of different people. And I think that some residents might feel, you know, if they go and visit a business, you know, during one of these sip and shares or whatever, that they are, you know, they are obviously doing a great job supporting the businesses, but it takes, it does take frequent, going there many, multiple times within a year or whatever, and that's why I was suggesting it.
Yeah. I think one of the challenges with sort of like a community-wide card is, okay, so I've spent all my money at Nix, you know, at the bar to get my points up, and then I walk over to Lambrix and buy jewelry with my points that, and how do they get, you know, when it's not an individual business offering a discount to its own customer, how does, how does the appropriate economic transfer take place? That's one of the, one of the stumbling blocks in toward, in terms of a, like a village-wide card. So the other, on parking, it's interesting you bring that up, because I brought that up, you know, five years ago. And we do have, actually, on the website now, don't we have a parking map for downtown? And we, we revamped some of the signs. The Village Hall signs, I think, could still use some work, but it, like, the, the signs The Village Hall signs, I think, could still use some work, but like the signs in, on the, in the metro lot are very clear if you park there during the work week, when you can park free in that lot and the like, so.
And if I can add to the parking discussion, we're in the process of communicating with restaurants about the changes the Village Board approved a couple of meetings ago, where we changed the time restrictions in an effort to allow employees to park off-street underneath in the Burmeister Lot or in the metro lot to free up spaces for customers. That was a suggestion that came from a restaurateur that went to staff and had Village Board approval, so we're going to be communicating that. And we've also talked internally about trying to find ways to work with the restaurants downtown to hand out some type of card or information sheet with their checks or something like that, where they can communicate to their customers about parking. So, we're definitely working on that and trying to, trying to make the perception of the parking problem better.
Yeah. Normally, when I get, when someone complains about parking, it's sort of a joke, and they usually say, there's no place to park in downtown Wilmette, isn't that great? You know, that's usually when I get the, when I get the parking complaint, it's associated with, isn't it great that we're so crowded that you actually have to, you know, park in the metro lot or look for parking? So.
I have a parking comment, too. You know, I think compared to, like, Evanston, where you either have to find the little machine and put your space number in, and it's not a lot, but you have to pay something, people really do like in Wilmette that you can just park for free and that you can park nearby. But I agree, I think there are places to park that people just aren't aware of.
The Hall Lot is the best example, because it, I mean, the sign suggests that you can only park there during Village Hall hours.
That's the, yes.
Free parking otherwise, or open parking otherwise.
And the other one that I think people maybe don't know about is the parking behind the shops, like where Lad and Lassie.
The alley, the, behind Central, yeah.
Yeah, because it's right there, and I think a lot of times, people just aren't aware of it. So, hopefully, with all these efforts, you know, we can increase awareness. I think the signage does help. I think some of the signs in the downtown area are nice-looking and clear and
And that one is a sign, isn't it? There's arrow signs to it, but I agree, I mean, I park there all the time because usually there's spots.
Yeah.
There's, in the evening, we do get more utilization in the Village Hall Lot, more than you might imagine if you're staying here working late. You actually do see people parking in the lot here to use the, for the restaurants. It's a little bit harder during the day. The metro lot, I think we did a better job of signing that as, to make it clear that it's free after 3:00 PM. And though still, it's a challenge for us to get people to the Burmeister Lot, because it's underground, some people prefer not to use that, but it's actually very convenient. It has a pedestrian exit right to Wilmette Avenue. One of the things we'll be looking at as we explore with the Central Avenue project, the Streetscape Grant that we have, signage is certainly part of, is going to be included in that study, and that'll extend to essentially a block either side of Central. So, it'll cover Wilmette Avenue and Central, and hopefully, as part of a new pedestrian environment, we'll have signage, some signage improvements, too.
Other questions? Trustee Kersman?
Thank you. I'm curious about the neighborhood retail business districts, and can you paint a picture for the occupancy rate in those, in those buildings? Similar to what Trustee Dodd mentioned about, you know, working into our previous meeting, we heard a lot about vacancies, fear of more vacancies. I'm curious what the current rate is and how it holds historically. I guess I'm curious about all commercial space, but I'm particularly interested about the neighborhood retail business districts. I mean, if that requires follow-up, that's fine, but I'm curious if you could just characterize it.
Yeah, we traditionally don't look at vacancy rates for individual districts, but I can, I can say, right now, for the commercial retail spaces as a Village as a whole, it's right below, right below 6%. And since 2015, the average vacancy rate has been 5.72%, with a high of 4.9 and a, I'm sorry, low of 4.9 and a high of 6.6.
Since what was the time period on that?
2015.
15, okay, so last, last few years.
And even going back to, like, 2010, it's pretty, pretty steady between five and a half, it averages, yeah, averages around 5.7%. And that's been pretty steady. It was a little bit high at the beginning of this year, but since, gone back down. I know, I think a lot of people ask questions about Fourth and Linden. There was the vacancy that happened when the hardware store law left. Fortunately, we did have a business owner who was a dentist in Oneeka who purchased the property and then subdivided the space. He's occupying one half of it, and he actually just got an office tenant, that leased. So, that space is now occupied. You know, some of the spaces on the north side of Linden, in that area, those spaces tend to be a little more difficult to rent. And just from, anecdotally, what I've heard from businesses is that the lease terms aren't great. So, I think that's somewhat of a reason why some of those vacancies are a little bit longer. I know on Ridge Road, some of the vacancies that we have are in the building, which was recently purchased by artists, and that's going to be going through a redevelopment, so really, no one's going into those spaces. And across the street, there's a vacancy where there's a plotty studio that left probably a couple of months ago. I would say, over the course of history, it's not really any higher or lower currently than it has.
So, in our most difficult economic times, it is consistent in that range? Or, like, how bad has it gotten?
For the vacancy, yeah, for the vacancy rate, I mean, since 2015, it was
I guess I'm thinking with the 2008 dip and other recessions, whether we've seen larger fluctuations in what you were describing in the last eight years?
Yeah, I don't know, it's hard to say. Just anecdotally, I think I noticed a drop-off, I would say, beginning of 2017 in just the number of businesses that I was getting calls from. I would say that slowly, fully increased. Past couple of months, it seems to be a little bit busier, I don't know if it's because of the summer or what, but, you know, all in all, it's really not, there's really not a lot of peaks and valleys.
Okay, Lucas, that's helpful.
I can add, I pulled up our 2012 budget, where we track performance measures, and the vacancy rate in 2010 was 4.9%, and 2011 was 4.9%. So, kind of within that range, Lucas was talking about even during the depths of the recession there.
Thank you. Well, yeah, may I ask one more before, yeah, thank you. So, I think we'll have broader discussions on this, but I'm curious if, I'm just too curious not to ask, do you have an opinion as to whether we have too many neighborhood retail business districts right now for where retail is going, or what you see as our ability to, you know, fully, fully have a vibrant, you know, economic neighborhood there? Or do we have too much capacity? Or do you think we can continue to fill these vacancies and have vibrant neighborhood retail business districts?
That's a good question. I think it's, we'll have to see. I think traditionally, at least the way the zoning ordinance is crafted, the neighborhood retail districts are allowed to accommodate more personal services and offices than you would see, let's say, in our Village Center downtown or in some of our, our commercial shopping centers. So, by design, they've traditionally had more service businesses and offices. I don't see, I don't see there being more retail businesses wanting to locate in those districts necessarily, just because of their, if there's an availability in our downtown where you have higher traffic volumes, most likely, those retail tenants are going to want to go where you have, you know, people walking. But it's going to be challenging.
Well, thanks for taking the questions. Trustee Dodd.
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on Trustee Kersman's question, because I thought it was really, really good, which was, he talked, he talked about vacancy rates, and you might not have this available to you now, but I'd be interested in looking at, you know, storefront vacancy rates, you know? So, not, I think when you look at vacancies across all the different businesses, that's, you know, but I would be interested in seeing a trend of storefront vacancy rates in the retail, in the various residential retail businesses, as well as the downtown area, because I think that's, would just be an interesting trend, to see if that's maybe different than the, you know, the steadiness of the overall vacancy rates, because, you know, small businesses are going into some of the second floors or, you know, multi-office base.
Right, and to your point, if you had, you know, if you're including office and the like
Right.
you could have a base that's so big, that 20 storefronts close in a month
That's exactly my question.
and it moves the percentage by two tenths or something.
Yes, that's exactly what my question is getting at.
The great question.
And I think it's something we should look at, and it's really building on your question, thank you.
Yeah, we could start tracking that.
One other, one other comment, just for the board, I don't know if people saw the Tribune's afternoon email last, the Fresh Market announced that they were closing a number of stores in Illinois, but I'm happy to report that of the four that are surviving, Wilmette was on the list. So, we survived that round, but, you know, the Fresh Market is not in the, not in expansion mode anymore, and clearly, you know, had announced some retail closings in Illinois, but Wilmette was not on the list. So, any other questions? Thank you very much, very helpful. Back to Trustee Sol.
Our other two items were approved on consent.
Administration Committee, Trustee Dodd.
All items on consent.
Municipal Services Committee, Trustee Wolf.
One item covered on consent.
Public Safety, Trustee Kersman. No report. There were two items on the Judiciary Committee's consent agenda. There are no reports from our special committees. Item seven is new business, there's no additional new business to discuss. Item eight, pending matters referred to standing committees, no actions to take there tonight. So, move on to item nine, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. 8:33 PM.